Could you please report out of closed session for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council in Mesa, or no, just the City Council, excuse me, met in closed session with respect to labor negotiations between the city and the Emeryville Police Officers Association. An update was provided, and the council provided direction to its designated representatives regarding terms of the successor MOU with the POA. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, that meeting is adjourned. We'll now open the City of Emeryville's successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency meeting. Could we go ahead and have roll call, Karen?
Didn't grab my cheat sheet, sorry. Councilmember Davis? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Brinkman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Vice Mayor, sorry, Vice Chair Atkins. Wait, I'm getting confused. Vice, you're right, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Yeah.
And Mayor Asher.
I'm here as well. And I do this for the benefit of the folks at home, right? Those who are watching at home. So we introduce ourselves often.
I'm not here, actually.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance now, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any public comments this evening? No. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Status report on the Oversight Board Legal Expenditures. We have not met since the last meeting, and so therefore there's no status report from the Chair either. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned.
Two-minute minutes.
All right. I'd like to call to order the Emeryville City Council regular meeting this evening. We have, I don't believe we have, any special orders of the day. So now is the time for public comments. Any comments from the public?
Hi, yes. Thank you, Mayor Asher, and Councilmembers, Bob Cantor. I'm the President and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Asher, and our City Manager, Sabrina, for your wonderful presentation last Wednesday at our annual State of the City luncheon. We've received a lot of good comments, and you generated a lot of buzz here in town. It was a very successful event. We had over, as some of you have mentioned, over 160 people registered. Not that many, actually, were in the room. We had about 140 in the room. That's an all-time record for that event, which I think is a tribute to you and our new City Manager, Sabrina. Your remarks were very well presented, very thoughtful and far-ranging, and we hope you enjoyed it. It was your first time, of course, as in your position as Mayor, and Sabrina as our City Manager. So a lot of firsts. So I want to thank both of you. I sent you a written thank you, as I tend to do these days. I'm of that generation, but I wanted to also verbally thank you as well. And thank you for the other council members, Councilmember West and Atkins, who attended. Councilmember Nora wasn't able to attend, and Kirk. But thank you for being there. Normally, this event is held in January. We moved it to March this year, which at first I wasn't real pleased with. It turned out to be a good move, and I suspect we'll keep it on a March-to-March basis from now on. So please accept, on behalf of the Board of Directors, our Chair, Albert Repola, who I'll be meeting with tomorrow morning, and me, my sincere thanks, and Sabrina, you two, for a wonderful, wonderful presentation and making the event a big success for the Chamber as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments from the public?
I have to take care of my child this evening, so I would, I'm requesting that you move up an item, if possible. And then, I'm sorry, I'm, I think I have the wrong agenda. Is this the right agenda? The green?
Eight point one is what you want, Brian.
Is it the Charter City?
The Charter, yeah. I would, I'm requesting you, so I can listen to that presentation.
We'll get to it rather quickly, I think.
If you could move that up as much as you could, I would much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments from the public? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the City Managers' report.
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay.
Move the consent calendar.
Before I can even get it out, Nora has a motion.
Let's move along.
I'll second it.
I apologize for being, of course, the rock in someone's shoe, but 5.7, I just want to pull that for brief comment.
Anyone else? Want to pull anything?
I moved the remainder.
Okay.
I second the remainder.
Okay. All those in favor? Yes, and so we'll...
I have, I already have Davis and Brinkman.
And Brinkman. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye. So now, we'll move on to 5.7. Jennifer?
Okay. I guess I failed to also just comment on the general plan update. I always find that very interesting and informative, so I want to appreciate staff for putting that. 5.7 is just an update on our long, on trash long-term reduction plan, and it includes installing full capture trash devices, 45 of them around the city. And I asked for a picture of this device, because I wanted to understand better what it looked like and what it does exactly. I don't know if you have the capacity to show that picture. I know it was through email today, but I just wanted to be sure the public was aware of the money that we're spending and how it's helping us to reduce litter and trash that flows out to the bay, which is, you know, part of our job, but also is the right thing to do. So Maurice, thank you for just very brief comments about what this device is, why, and what it costs us, if you're able to.
If I could find the picture real quick.
Okay. That'd be great. It's nice to see how organized everything is.
I know. That is so orderly.
I like your files.
You are an engineer.
There's just good protocols in place by our city staff.
It's not working right.
It's not in your 1314 folder? That's too bad.
Oh, maybe it is. Should be.
Yeah, go back to their 1314.
There we go. Oh, thank you.
Okay, here we go. So this is one of the devices that we're going, we have actually installed on Powell Street in the news, in the new area drain that we put in with the sidewalk work on Powell Street, or the drain we modified. So these devices are custom-built, and they're stainless steel cages that are put in the area drain. So they're, they're set up in a way so that the trash won't get into the storm drain itself, and it'll be trapped by this cage here. We are experimenting with this right now. I mean, we didn't get to use it through a full winter season, and we're hoping that they don't capture too many leaves, or it will capture leaves, and it'll require additional maintenance. But we're ordered to put these in. I should say that we're capturing most of the trash at the source with our SWAT program. And so we, we don't expect to see a lot of litter in them compared to some of the other cities, but we will get leaves from all our trees. So they're there. We're going to keep an eye on them and make sure we don't get any flooding.
And they're somewhere around $500 apiece?
Roughly, yes. We're going to put in 45 total, as we're required to capture a tributary area of about 21 acres of public roadway. So we figured out that all of 40th and Shellmount Street in those area drains is just about the right amount of acreage, and it's in our higher zone for having trash.
How many acres is our city?
Well, we're a mile and a quarter square, right? So...
About 800 acres.
And we're only required to capture from 21 acres? That's part of a...
Because the municipal regional permit requirement. So, and we have to have these installed by the end of June this year.
Okay. And we will have them done by then?
Yes, we will.
Okay. So thank you for explaining that. I just thought that would be of interest. And thanks for the picture. I'm told that you can see it in shallow ones if you look just right.
Exactly.
But it's not visible in general. And with that, I'll move item 5.7.
Second.
We have no public hearings this evening or policy items, so we're on to item 8.1. Consideration of initiating steps to place a Charter City measure on the November 4th, 2014 statewide election ballot. Karen?
So I do have a short presentation. It really is a summary, mostly for the viewing public that may not have seen this before. The issue about Emeryville becoming a Charter City has come forward to the City Council before. We are here today because Mayor Asher has asked that it be brought forward, and that council directs staff to take steps to, one, place a ballot measure for the November 4th election, for Emeryville to become a Charter City, subject to, of course, voter approval. And then, secondly, also at the same time, to put a measure on the ballot enacting a property transfer tax that would also require a vote of the people. So I will give a very short presentation. So there's several reasons that cities adopt a charter, as opposed to remaining a general law city, as Emeryville is today, when it was incorporated in 1896. And so the reasons are to address issues or conditions or needs that cannot be met adequately by the state laws governing general law cities. When you're a general law city, issues related to municipal affairs are covered by state laws, but oftentimes, state laws may be silent on an issue that the voters and/or the City Council would like to be included in a charter. And what a charter really is, is a local constitution. It's a framework of what the city's powers are, that are different than what would be provided for in general law, and can be stricter than, but not general, but, but not more lenient than what's already in the state general law, or can fill or address issues that general law is silent on. So these, so some examples for that are public campaign financing, self-governance, contracting. And for many general law cities that are considering becoming Charter Cities, being able to adopt a local property transfer tax. General law cities are limited to what is provided for in general law, which is $1.10 per thousand square foot, which is evenly split between the county and the city in terms of revenue. And so for Emeryville or any other general law city, that is 55 cents per 1,000 square feet. And we'll get a little bit about some of the differences that that could generate in terms of revenue.
Sorry, Karen, just really quickly to clarify, it's per 1,000...
I've got P-bid on the mind.
Assess, sorry. Of the assessed value.
1,000, thank you, 1,000 assessed value. I've got P-bid on the mind. Okay, so, if permitted, a city charter can address these issues, or just reserve the right to be able to do so in the future. And anything that would be done so in the future, unless specifically exempted by the specific charter that is passed, can be legislated either by the City Council by ordinance or through the ballot initiative process by ordinance. And some of these issues are certain municipal election matters, procedures for adopting ordinances and resolutions, the compensation of city officers and employees, processes associated with city contracts and financing public improvements, city term limits, public campaign financing, some land use and zoning decisions that general law cities do not have, and the ability to levy additional property taxes. And a full list of a comparison of what a general law city and a Charter City could decide to either provide in their charter or through future ordinances is included in your council packet. So an adopted city charter can be simple. It doesn't need to set out any municipal affair the city would like to govern. It could essentially just declare that the city intends to avail itself of the full power provided by the California Constitution, and that any city ordinance that regulates a municipal affair will govern over a general law of the state for that particular municipal affair. Included in your packet is a sample from Lafayette, and that is what I would call a very simple charter, that essentially just reserves the right to essentially be able to do whatever is within the power of a charter to do. You could also have a simple charter that explicitly limits the powers of the city government and say that this charter says that the city can only, cannot exercise any powers different than a general law city, except for X, Y, and Z. So you can kind of have the reverse simple charter, one that rather reserving the right to do anything that a Charter City, a Charter can do. It could conversely say, this charter prevents the City Council or through ballot initiative any issue other that a general law city could not have, except those enumerated into the, into the charter. How is a city charter adopted or amended? A charter is adopted if a majority of voters approve of the charter in an election. The City Council can draft a charter and place the proposed charter on the ballot on its own initiative. Conversely, the City Council can convene a Charter Commission that would then come up with the language for that charter, then to be adopted at a following election. Formal city commissions, as opposed to an advisory body, is something that essentially, there's a nomination process, much like there is for an elected office like council. Those names are put on a ballot, and they are formally voted to be the Charter Commission. From my understanding, that this is not what's being proposed right now, that what's being proposed by the mayor would be the City Council directly putting a charter on the ballot. They can, you can do so, simply through the ballot initiative process with some caveats. And we'll get to that. And then, a city charter can only be amended by a majority of voters. And again, the amendments can be proposed by the City Council or by ballot initiative. If it's by ballot initiative, it needs to be proposed by 15% of the registered voters. However, if it was simply an ordinance that was within the charter to be legislated by the City Council or by ballot initiative, then that type of ordinance would be 10%, as it is now.
Can I ask you a quick question on the last slide? Two things. In the second bullet, you mentioned a citizens group can initiate the process. That's different from a Charter Commission that is elected.
Well, if it is a citizens group that is bringing forward a charter, essentially what the, the petition is, is it's, what would go on the ballot are two questions. The first question is, shall there be, you know, shall Emeryville become a Charter City? And then, the second question is essentially establishing the Charter Commission, and that those commissioners would be listed, and you would vote on each one. And each, the nomination process to become a Charter Commissioner is the same, really, as for the City Council, that you have to go through a nomination process, turn in nomination papers with at least 20 registered voters, get your name on the ballot, and I think it's up to 15 can be part of this Charter Commission. If, if the voter, if the electorate decides to establish a Charter Commission, then that Charter Commission is up to two years to actually come up with finalized language for the proposed charter, and then that charter would go on a ballot.
So there would be three things voted on at the beginning, whether to establish a charter or not, to elect the commissioners, and then at the end of that process, voting on the charter.
Yes, but not at the same time. You would have to, the Charter Commission would have to develop the language that's in the charter, determine what the powers are or are not that are going to be reserved by Emeryville as a Charter City. And then, that language would be submitted to the voters at a subsequent election to be voted upon.
And are those simple majority votes, or do they require two-thirds?
They're simple majority votes.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, in the instance of, if there was interest in doing a, a property transfer tax, assuming that that was one of the rights reserved in the charter as drawn up by the commission, that then could be put on at the same ballot as the, as the language for the charter itself. So it's a, it's a longer process. So to kind of switch to local property transfer taxes, and at the end, I do have a calendar if the council is interested in going forward, is that every Alameda County Charter City has a local property transfer tax, and it varies from a low in Hayward of $4.50 per thousand to a high in Berkeley and Oakland of $15 per thousand. Typically, this amount is negotiated as part of a sales transaction. In Berkeley, I know when I bought my house, the seller and I, as the buyer, split those So to give a sense of what the city is receiving now versus what the city could receive for a $12 per 1,000 assessed value, is this chart. So for every $1,000, the city now receives $55, splitting the $10 with the county. If there was a local transfer tax of $12 per thousand, for 100,000, every 100,000 would be $1,200. So, and then this just gives you a sense of, for every million dollars, which might be a little bit easier to multiply for a commercial sale, you get a sense of the difference between receiving $550 and receiving $550 plus the $12,000. So you, you add those two. So for a typical, what I would say, residential transaction of $400,000 for a housing unit in Emeryville, currently, the city receives $220 for that sale. If there was a $12 per 1,000 assessed value, then that would be $4,800 for that transaction. It is also possible to craft language that exempts sales of under a certain amount, but of course, this is kind of, I would say, your bread and butter, you know, kind of the, you know, the properties that turn over on a regular basis. We'll see in the next slide what happens when those spikes occur. And so for a, I would say, a typical medium-sized commercial property, right now, the city receives about $33,000 and could receive $720,000. So the next slide gives some sense of recent major property sales, and what was received by the city, the, the sales price, what was received by the city, and what could have been received at $12 per 1,000 assessed value. So I'll just take the, the most recent, which was Novartis, and with a sales price of just under 112 million, 112.7 million, the city received just under $62,000 in property transfer fees. With a $12 per 1,000 assessed value property transfer tax, the city would have received almost 1.5, over $1.35 million. So that's an example of, of one of those spikes. And this gives you some sense of some of the other types of recent transactions that have taken place, that have been large transactions. The next slide is a little bit hard to read, I'm afraid, but it gives you some sense of what has, what, from 2009 through, through 2013, on an annual basis, the value of property sales in Emeryville, and for this current year, 2014, and this is fiscal year, through February, so about eight months of the fiscal year, and this includes the Novartis sale. This just came in. And so you can see that Emeryville currently, over that period of time, from fiscal year 2008, 2009, to 2013 to 14, received about $1.79 million in property transfer tax. And it gives you a sense that at a 12, if that had been a $12 per 1,000 assessed value amount, then that would have been $29.2 million over that same period of time. If the city, if the city had had the kind of minimum that's done now in the county, which is the Hayward at $4.50 per 1,000 assessed value, then that would be just, that would be over 10.8 million. And, you know, that's a pretty huge difference than what the city did receive. And so that detail is in your packet as well, if you want to get more specific about what that is. And I gave this because it kind of gives some varying years. So for the example, 2010, very low. I mean, that was the, you know, that was at the bottom of the market. There probably wasn't a lot of properties that were being put on the market at that time, and of those that were, were probably undervalued. And so this would maybe give you a sense of a minimal year. And then, of course, 2011 was the sale of the Towers. And you see kind of what a maximum year might be. So this gives you some sense of what could be generated under these different scenarios. So the last thing, which I, give me a minute. I forgot to put this on my main slide. So, whoops.
Can a charter, while you're looking, can a charter differentiate, like, amounts, like homeowner's exemption of 7,000? Could a charter specify that the first X amount would be, wouldn't be subject to this, or just subject to the general law, not the...
You can tier it, can't you?
Yes, you can make some tiers to exempt. Now, of course, if you, you know, kind of go back to that chart, that to the extent that you exempt, let's say, residences under 400,000 or, or properties under 400,000, that's kind of your bread and butter sales to some degree. I mean, you know, yeah. So I'm just saying that that is the...
I'm just wondering if there's that flexibility.
There is that flexibility, and then, any projected revenue expectations would be adjusted accordingly.
Yeah, and if I may, there are some cities that have done some very specific carve-outs. Like in San Francisco, they have tiers for different sale prices, but then they also have credits for homes that have done solar, and I believe seismic retrofitting. So there, there are different ways you can carve it out.
And I, my assumption is that you could also probably carve out those that are in your affordable, your affordable housing program as well. So that would be something that, if there was interest in going ahead with this, staff could come back with a few possibilities for, for the consideration, and as well as the revenue impact of that, of those particular options. Okay, so what I wanted to put in, which I apologize for forgetting to put this as part of my PowerPoint, is the potential calendar. It used to be that putting a Charter City on the ballot was as simple as the regular ballot measure process. That is, and oftentimes, and generally speaking, city councils call the election in June for candidates, and may, and then can either call ballot, any ballot measure, whether it be for a tax or any other ballot measure at that same time, or sometime between then and the first week in August, which is the last date that the county, that you, that you can place a ballot measure on, which is 88 days before the election. Probably because of Bill California, that has been changed. And now, there's a whole process that occurs before a city council can act to put a charter that it wants to put on the ballot. And essentially, that there's a requirement that there be noticing, as well as two distinct public hearings. And just to kind of back it from the beginning, is that before the council could essentially call the election for a Charter City ballot measure, 21 days before that, there would have to be the second of two, the second of two public hearings. And then, 30 days before that second hearing, no, and no earlier than, 30 days before that second hearing, would be your first public hearing. And then, before you could have your first public hearing, you would have to have put a notice in the paper about the charter 21 days before that. So essentially, from the time that the charter, so here is a sample calendar. If the council gave direction to staff tonight to start the Charter City process, then essentially, by the May 6th City Council meeting, there would have to be language that essentially, assuming regular meetings, that that would be the last meeting that the City Council could finalize the language for the charter. And then, there is a little bit of time, because essentially, that May 20th date is the last date to meet public noticing requirements to be able to put in, into a newspaper for publication. And so that's the schedule, to put it into the Oakland Tribune, May 24th being the last day to actually put, that the notice would appear in the, in the paper, or at least 21 days before the first public hearing. So if you kind of moved up that schedule, which would be challenging, it's at least, you know, you have to leave 21 days before the publication of the, of the Charter City and the next public hearing. So assuming this kind of schedule of May 20th, then the first public hearing could occur on June 24th.
14th?
June 14th, sorry, 14th. The second public hearing could happen July, July 15th. One of those public hearings has to be outside of the regular business day. One of those public hearings has to be outside of the regular business day. That's another requirement, that you can't have your public hearings at 2 o'clock in the afternoon or 10 o'clock in the morning, where the public may find it difficult to attend. And the August, and that the final day to adopt would be August 5th, which right now is not scheduled to be a city council meeting, but could be scheduled. And there is no requirement that this, a ballot measure be put on the ballot at a regular meeting. This did, there was a requirement to do that about a year or so ago with the city attorney ballot measure, but that's because it was an initiative, and initiatives can only be certified at a regular meeting. So it didn't have to do with putting the ballot measure on, it had to do with the certification of an initiative petition. So, so this is then just kind of a full detail of what happens next. There's also, if you're not, if you're not calling the election to August 5th, is really a very telescoped period for, you would essentially at the same time direct the city attorney to write the impartial analysis, decide whether the council was going to file arguments and rebuttal arguments. And so all that has to be done at once, because by August 15th, that is the last day that the registered voters will receive ballot arguments for ballots. So it, you know, it's really kind of the bare minimum amount of time to be able to get that done. And the council certainly has done that before, but it is tight. And election would be November 4th, and again, if the city council is the one that puts on the charter, on the ballot, it must be done at a statewide election. And so after this November, the next would, wouldn't be for a while, for two more years.
Can I just ask, if we hadn't changed our, our regular city council election to the even years, we could have only put it on then in an even year. You're saying a statewide election?
I haven't asked the city attorney that question, but it does say a statewide, it does say a statewide election, so I don't know what happens when your, this election isn't a statewide.
Yeah, who knows? Okay.
I haven't read the language, so I can't tell you.
Serendipitous, perhaps.
Okay, so...
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, do it, I'll just get ready.
Leave that on.
Yeah, leave it up, yeah. We're gonna maybe hear from the public now and then stick close by, because I'm sure there will be questions. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? No?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So before you enter into discussion about this tonight, everyone needs to be clear about what you're really discussing doing, and that is, you're not here, you're not here tonight discussing whether or not we want to increase taxes in Emeryville. You're not really even here discussing whether or not you're going to turn our city into a charter city. What you're entering into a process is, you're discussing, entering into a process whereby you're going to allow the people of Emeryville to decide for themselves whether or not they want to be a charter city, and then maybe after that, or simultaneous, if they want to increase taxes. So that's really what you're doing here, so let's keep, let's keep this clear. What you're being charged with here tonight is to, whether or not you're going to allow the people of the, of the city to decide for themselves, or whether or not you're going to withhold that privilege for the people to be able to decide for themselves whether or not they, how they envision their city. So that's what we're, that's what we're discussing here tonight. Are you going to grant this power to the people, or are you going to withhold this power to the people? Thank you very much.
Anybody else? No? Okay, I'd like to hear from council then. Anyone? Jennifer?
I think this is a very ambitious timeline that's been put forward, no doubt about that, but I want to thank the mayor for bringing, raising this. We have many, you know, long-term financial concerns that redevelopment is gone, and we have, we're reinventing ourselves, I guess, as a, as a city without redevelopment, which we relied on so heavily over the last 30 years or so. And I think the council absolutely should consider this, and I think instructing the staff to move forward on the process, it will mean quick learning on our part, and yet I think this is an opportunity. And when I look at the other cities in our county, in our region, that are charter cities, and it seems like, it wasn't stated explicitly, but it seems like one of the number one reasons to do that is this, allowing a property transfer tax to be imposed. I feel that Emeryville's property obviously is of great value. We've seen, you know, the assessed values fall and rise again recently, but I think this is an opportunity that we should consider, and so I hope that the rest of the council will, will support that as well.
In 2008, then council member Bukowski and I brought this issue forward, and we had attended a workshop at a league conference about the pros and cons, and the Fremont material of, full of concerns and issues was something that weighed heavily. So when we brought it up in 2008, people, the council at the time was not interested in, in pursuing it. And I actually wanted to take Brian's comments to heart here. This might be, the reason to do this might be financial, but this is actually far broader, which is about decisions about how we govern ourselves, and issues around home rule and local control and versus state law. So when we go down this path, the short-term motivator might be the ability to collect a tax that we can't collect as a general law city, but becoming a charter city, depending on what we put in it, is very much about, like, as you said, Karen, kind of a constitution and how the people of Emeryville want their city to run. In 2008, I, I don't know if he still works in Sacramento, but I spoke to the state senate, I don't know, I forget his title, mucky muck on, on local affairs, you know, municipal affairs. And he said that there was one charter that was two paragraphs long, that says, "We, the city, you know, of so-and-so," I don't even remember the city, "agree to follow the general rules and laws of the state of California," and they had a racetrack, and then there was a paragraph about the racetrack, and that was it. It was a two-paragraph charter that the residents there approved, and then we have examples of more in-depth charters. So I think we need to separate the issue, what do we want our charter to say, from whether we want to be able to collect more money? And because I think we're muddying the waters here. If we want to just be able to collect more money, then we have a very simple charter.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm kind of confused by this whole thing, and I don't know what the term is confusion, but, you know, looking back, it looks like, to me, like the city has ran very well in its current structure, so I have some issues with trying to change that structure. But also, I have some equity questions, because what you're asking to do is if we change it so we can tax people that sell their house, then we're taxing those people because they own a house. And usually, when people sell, it's a time where they need the cash to move on, either to retirement or move into another area. And I just don't really feel like it's fair for the renters to live here and not have to pay this sort of fee. So I just, I feel like it's slanted towards only the owners of property, and I have an equity problem with that. And also, on your previous presentation, we talked about contracting, there's, there's some ease of contracting. Well, the ease of contracting is when you don't have to do prevailing wage, and that's the cost savings, and I have a tremendous problem with that.
Me too.
And also, the last couple of points I have is that I look around, and I look at the cities that are charter cities, and we have the city of Berkeley that is receiving these funds, and they have over $100 million unfunded liabilities. And then I look to our other neighbor, the city of Oakland, that has the same sort of dollars coming in, or bigger dollars coming in, and they have $1.5 billion unfunded liabilities. So what I, what I'm trying to figure out is, I don't, I don't really have a problem with this. I think I have more of a problem with this at this time. I think that we've just gone through redevelopment agency, we're still trying to figure that out as far as what we have and what the city's going to look like in the new day. And I don't think that we really have the crisis as far as funds, that we really need these dollars right now. But I also think that we do need dollars, but I think we need to look at equity in how people pay those dollars, like, and maybe it's not equity so much for the hotel tax, but I think we need to do something there. I think there's other ways to do a utility tax, so everybody's in this team together, not just the homeowners that own property. So that's what I have to say.
Nora, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I do. First, Jack, I'd like to thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you, Ruth, for 2008, bringing it forward. Those were different times, that was when we had the redevelopment area. We're in a new era now, and we have substantially different challenges than we had in 2008. I think it is a good timing now to move forward on this. I don't believe that this schedule is too ambitious at all. If anything, I'd like to see it tightened up so that we give ourselves a little leeway on the deadline. But I would, I would certainly propose that we move forward to initiate the charter city process. There's a couple of reasons for this. I think Sacramento is becoming more and more alienated from the cities, and if we choose wisely what we do, I think that we, we have the ability to control our city and to manage our city a heck of a lot better than Sacramento politicians. I feel very, very strongly about that. Kurt, I understand your problems with the taxing of the, of the property owners, but we all have to realize there is a cost of government, and we've all got to start, we all have to bear that burden. This clearly is not a significant burden as you look down at the cities that are charter cities and that charge these taxes. So for more local control, one of the things that I want to tag onto Ruth is, I think it's very important that we have a very simple charter to start with, to give us the most flexibility. And I'm not a great one for reinventing the wheel. I think Lafayette has given us a template here that serves us well to start out with, and I believe strongly that we have an electorate in this city that, they don't pay a lot of attention, as you can see by this, but they're well-educated, well-informed, not so well-informed, but they can make decisions. So I would propose, and I would suggest that we move forward with this. And I want to thank you again, Jack. The timing is absolutely right.
So if I could just say a couple of things, and I want to answer some of Kurt's concerns too, because I think that we need to do that. I've heard from, some concerns from residents as well. For me, one of the reasons I was interested in this is that it's, the transfer tax is an economic tool for us. We've invested a lot of money over the years in creating plans for our cities and for various projects that we hoped to build. And we, without redevelopment, need a new economic tool, and I don't see Sacramento coming up with one anytime soon. And in fact, I think the other part of this story is that for general law cities, it's not just the loss of redevelopment, but there have been other things that have been happening that have been eroding their ability to do business.
Absolutely.
Harupa Valley and some other small municipalities decided to incorporate recently, and then the state decided they were going to take away the vehicle licensing fee. And so what that means for those cities is actually that they cannot incorporate, because that's, for some of them, 50% of their budget. So when you think about a general law city, you're really tied to, your fate is tied to what the state decides to do. And what we've seen most recently is that the state, you know, has no qualms about taking away redevelopment, the state has no qualms about shifting the vehicle license fee, and this will give us a way to at least control, set, and, and plan for our economic future, despite what the, what the state is doing. And the other thing that, when Kurt's talking about equity, I think that something that would help me, and when we come back with this, a data point that I would like to see, is how many residential ownership units do we have in town, and how many turnover year to year versus the large commercial properties? I'm just, because we do have a lot of renters in town, and so I'm just, I'm wondering what that, what that number looks like. Because we could say that that is our bread and butter, but we're, we're not Piedmont, right? And there are fewer owner-occupied units in the city, and I think we might have a different story to tell about how it affects owners. That being said, one of the things that I'd like to see from staff, I agree with Nora that the Lafayette charter is a good template to start with. And one of the other things that I would like to see in terms of the documentary transfer tax would be an example of a tiered strategy, as well as the strategy that's been presented here, let's say with the $12 to $1,000 AV. And my understanding is that there are those carve-outs, there are some other things that we can do, and so I would just like to see a couple of templates from, from staff presented to us, along with, I think, that general charter based on Lafayette's. I think that's all that I had in my notes. Is there any other, Mayor Asher?
I have one.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, go ahead. No, you young ladies go first. Age before beauty.
Yeah, I agree that it's important to pursue charter status because of the lack of compunctions the state has shown in taking away local monies.
All right.
So, so I think you have, at least, I think you have near unanimity on that.
Okay.
I want to throw in something that is philosophically important to me. I'm not sure if it's going to make a whole lot of difference, though, but for higher level offices, I would very much like to see public financing. And I don't know how funds for public financing happen. I know Lonley Hancock has fought for that and other levels of office. And our little city, I don't know about the rest of you, but especially the first time I ran, you know, fundraising is hard, and we don't have deep pockets. None of us are well endowed. And if we could become a little model of what public financing could look like, I'd certainly would like to learn more about that and how that could be financed and pursued, because I don't think the ability to raise money should be a factor in seeking elected office.
Ruth, if I may, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with some part of it, but if you are really interested in having a charter city voted on and approved by the people to muddy the waters by asking for public financing for elected officials, is going to give you, I think, a backlash. If you really want to, we want to move forward with the charter, let's keep it as clean and simple as we possibly can. and simple as we possibly can with, you know, allowing ourselves flexibility in the future. But the key here, we want here, is to put it to the people, and hopefully they approve of it. And to do that, keep it clean.
I, I, I understand your strategic concerns here. I also just want to say that I, I support paying prevailing wages, and we have a living wage ordinance here in town. And I don't think anything in our charter should negate our wage provisions that we already have.
Right, and we can protect that. And we can protect that.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
And so those are my two main issues about what I would like specified.
Okay. Well, and also, at, once you have charter city status, you have the power to call special elections, is that correct? Or can you, could you do?
You can do that now.
Could you do that? Could you do public financing through ordinance, or that would have to be through the ballot?
No, it's a ballot.
Once you became a charter city?
I believe it could be by ordinance.
Yeah.
By ordinance.
You could do it by ordinance?
I think unless you're...
Are you sure?
I mean, that, but maybe we should ask staff to look into that, if that is something that you want. But I agree with Nora.
Focus on the main chance here.
I think it would depend on what is in your charter. So for example, if the charter reserved all the rights of a charter city, then those kinds of things are, can be done by ordinance.
Public financing is a...
If, if your, if your charter did not include kind of all the powers, and it would be something, campaign financing would take amendment of the charter, then, then that's a different story.
I agree with Nora, though, that asking a narrow question is the way that we're going to have the most success with this.
And the question I now have is for staff. I think Ruth made the comment, there seems to be unanimity, almost unanimity here. Does the staff have a clear direction from the council? You're the leader, Sabrina, what do you say?
We do. We're going to have to move very quickly.
You bet.
You know, but, you know, we will, we'll do everything we can. And just to be clear, we're bringing back both the charter and the transfer tax information to you.
Both, please. Jennifer, you had a comment?
Yeah, my only comment, I appreciate the, the concerns that Kurt raised. But around the property transfer tax, you know, more than 75% of our land use is commercial and not the homeowners, even though I think in our minds, we, it's easier to tell the story of the homeowner and how that impact might be felt in terms of selling and paying that tax. But the bulk of any revenues that would be generated for the city would not be on the backs of the homeowners as much as on a commercial property owners, I would think. And given that our immediate neighbors and farther-reaching neighbors have something like this on, in place, it does, right now, seem to make Emeryville very attractive. But if we can't support the infrastructure that we have adequately with the funds that we have with that redevelopment, I think that it is, it's warranted. But I, I share your concern of homeownership versus renters. And I think the data that was asked for by the mayor, I hope that will help illuminate some of that for us as well.
Yeah.
Mayor Asher? When you come back, can we have some type of input as to the percentage of tax? You know, you used the figure 12%. It sounds good to me. It's not too ambitious, it's not too poor. But we need to have an economic analysis on that.
Instead of 12%, it's more like .012% or something like that, yeah.
And so do we need a roll call vote on this, please?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's go ahead.
Council, a majority of the council gave direction.
Okay.
Oh, actually, now we do need to know, so is it, I don't, we don't need a roll call, but I need to know who said yes and who said no.
Why don't you just take a roll call?
I'll take your roll call.
That's the best way to do it.
Keep it simple here.
This is one of those areas where with the change in law, before, it would have been just council majority, but now we actually have to...
Record it.
Record it.
Yeah.
And that doesn't happen too often here. So council member?
Brinkman?
Brinkman?
Yes. I'm going to, I don't agree all the time with Brian, but I will agree, and I'm going to say yes, let the people decide.
What a good guy.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Yes.
And Mayor Asher?
Yes.
You see, then it could have been just unanimous.
It could have been, yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. On to number nine, city is housing successor. We don't have anything there. Communication and reports from department heads. Maurice?
Yes, I'd like to report on the status of the East Bay MUD water main construction underway on Hollis and on Powell Street. As you know, there's been a lot of gridlock lately with respect to all the work being done on Powell Street in the vicinity of Christie and the Denny's area, near the freeway. They've been working in the daytime on that segment of Powell Street. They're in the westbound lane. They actually attempted to work in the intersection of Powell and Christie, and traffic became unbearable. So we had to tell them to stop working in that area. And they've been continuing to work during the daytime beyond the intersection, but they're getting close to needing to do work at the intersection. And they're proposing to work at night, starting Sunday night. And they would go through about six evenings to get the work done in the intersection. When that's done, East Bay MUD is going to need to come back to do some more work to cut over the old line, to disconnect the old line and activate the new water line. That would probably be about two weeks later, and that would also be done at night in the middle of the intersection. While they're working in the intersection, they'll need to close the eastbound Powell left-turn lanes onto Christie. So there'll be detour signs set up so they can go around the loop. There's still ways to get back to Christie Avenue, but that detour needs to be set up to enable the work to proceed. With that said, all the water main work is supposed to be finished sometime in the middle of April, and that would include all the paving and striping and everything done. So that's the latest I've heard from East Bay MUD.
Thank you.
And then PG, our, that includes all the gas work too, and all the...
No, that had, no, so that's the water main work.
And then also...
So if I can report on the gas, my understanding is they want to proceed, PG&E is anxious to proceed and was hoping to start real soon, but we've told them that they can't get started there until East Bay MUD's cleared the way. So once the water main is done...
Don't complain, we want this stuff fixed.
Right, so the water main will be done on Hollis Street, the gas main will start up. And as soon as that's done, the city will start on a sewer on Powell, right in the same area. So there's a lot of work in that area.
So Maurice, why don't you tell everybody your telephone number, just in case...
Other department heads? No? Nothing from anyone? Okay. Council members? Okay, I have a couple of announcements here on my daily trek to the rec center. I want to talk about a couple of things from community services. First of all, donations are wanted for the Emeryville Senior Center Flea Market fundraiser. This is something I look forward to all year long. This is April 24th and April 26th, and you can drop off your donations at the senior center. And all proceeds benefit the senior center. Second, community services is instituting a new program called Parks and Playground, and it'll be Saturdays from April 5th through June 7th. Kids ages seven to 14 can go to, is it just anti-8 Cindy, or to all the parks? Just to anti-8s to begin with. And it's a drop-in program where kids will be able to play, and there will be rec leaders there. And so this is something new that the city is trying out, and I just want to encourage everyone to attend.
You said that's on Saturdays?
It's on Saturdays beginning April 5th.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I want to talk about is, I want to thank everyone who attended the Temescal Park Celebration and Ribbon Cutting on Saturday. We heard from the poet Laureate. That was really wonderful. My son insisted on cutting the ribbon also, and then ran with the scissors shortly afterwards.
I thought you weren't allowed to do that.
I know, right? Of course. It, it was, it was great. We, as I was talking, one of the hawks flew up into the eucalyptus tree, and we heard a wonderful poem from our poet Laureate, which I hope that maybe we'd be able to put in one of the city newsletters or, or circulate some way. But that park is a wonderful asset in, in the Triangle community, and I, I see it filled every afternoon with families. So things have really changed in that area, and it's wonderful to see. Anyone else? Council members? No? With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.